Good evening. Welcome to our Monday, April 9th Killable Hills Board of Commissioners meeting. We will call our meeting to order. And first item, if you'll please rise and join us for the flagpole.
Flagpole is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Thank you. And before we move into our moment of silence, just a couple of people to keep in your thoughts and prayers. One is our longtime former planning board member Howard Kimbo, who had some recent surgery. So we wish Howard a speedy recovery, and so thinking of his wife Doris during this time. And also frequent folks that are here with our meeting chip and Colleen Almond, who both are recovering from the flu. So you'll keep all of these folks in our thoughts. And with that, we'll enter into a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Okay. Next up, we have our agenda approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please sign us in, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, this is the first time then we'll move on to public comment. It's the first time this evening for public comment. There's two opportunities. This is an opportunity for anyone in the audience who wishes to speak or bring an item to the board to do so. We start with a sign up list, and then once we work through the list, if anyone else would still like to speak, we'll call from the floor. And when we do call your name, if you would go to the podium and identify yourself, please, by name and address. We ask that if you're speaking as an individual, you limit your comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, if you would please try to keep your comments to five minutes. And with that, we'll start, and welcome Ms. Susan Merrill. Thank you, with the lead.
Good evening. My name is Susan Merrill. I'm here with the League of Women Voters. I don't have the bandwidth anymore to memorize this whole thing, so I'm going to read it to you, and I apologize for that. I'm here to present to you the 2018 Citizens Guides. Complimentary copies of the guide, which has been published by the League since 1988, are distributed annually to government and business offices throughout the county. We'd like to acknowledge the county commission, municipalities, and local businesses that contributed generously toward our publication expenses, which are huge, and acknowledge the support of the many employees who provided updated information. Our guide is published under the auspices of the State League of Women Voter Citizen Education Fund. The guide provides names, addresses, phone numbers, and email addresses for national, state, county, and municipality officials. Additionally, the guide has information on governmentally funded recreation areas and services, local attractions, voting information, and emergency numbers. Seven thousand one hundred copies of the guide are being distributed by the League members from Duck to Hatteras Village, Roanoke Island, and mainland Dare County. They are available in libraries, post offices, the Baum and Fessenden Centers, as well as town and county offices. The guide is also available on the League's website, www.lwvdarenc.org. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization that encourages the informed and active participation of citizens in government and influences public policy through education and advocacy. Publishing this guide is part of our continued commitment to provide pertinent information to our community's voters. Membership in the League of Women Voters is open to anyone of voting age, male or female. New members are always welcome. Thank you for your support, and we know you'll find our guide useful. And as a little P.S., this year, for the first time, we are running a pilot program where we also published in Spanish. We've distributed those. Mayor Davies has some. We've distributed in different spots where some of our Spanish-speaking friends might be able to pick them up to use them. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Susan.
Thank you.
Wonderful guide. Time for me, yeah. Okay, next we have Roy Valentine.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. My name is Roy Valentine. I live on Norfolk Street in Killable Hills. I just got a few questions, trying to find some information. Would it be possible, post on your website, the location, estimated completion date of any road construction or building project at hamper traffic in the county? Like, there's a new hotel under construction. That's going to be one of the bridges, and that's going to be finished. Bay Street, when that's going to be finished? And maybe you give me the date of, when the bypass is going to be resurfaced? It's been 15 years, and it's getting kind of rough. Next. Just a suggestion, when trash picked up is reduced to once a week, why not make it a Tuesday or a Wednesday? Or maybe even a Tuesday or a Thursday? Instead of, yeah, Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, instead of just Monday? Why not Monday and Tuesday? Because Monday is always a federal holiday, so when a federal holiday falls on that one day a week, it throws the whole thing out of kilter. Sometimes you don't get your trash picked up at all that week. Make it on Tuesday, Wednesday? Holidays on a Monday? No problem. Don't miss nothing. And I suggested some of these at the county commissioners meeting, and I was told it wasn't their purview, so Commissioner Whitley suggested I come here for a lot of this stuff, so you can blame him. All right. The other thing was bicycle stencils on a multi-use path on the beach road. I do a lot of bicycle riding, and I try to stay off the highway because it's dangerous, stay on a multi-use path. But in the summer, our visitors will walk three or four abreast and seem to be irritated, and I have the audacity to ride a bicycle there. And so need to have some way to let people know that it is a shared path. It's not just a pedestrian walkway. All right. And last, is there any way to encourage the jolly rider to pave their parking lot? For years, since I've been riding here, that's the worst parking lot entrance from Kitty Hawk to Nags Head. Right now, they got, it collects water, and they add gravel to it, I guess when the puddle gets so deep. But right now, those gravel strode from their parking lot all the way to the Mariner Hotel. If they could encourage them somehow. I'm told it was built before the building codes were enforced. Is there any way to encourage them to pave it so you don't have that hazard? It's a hazard if anybody riding on the right side of the road, as law requires. And that's about it. That's all I got. If you can answer this question, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Roy. We'll have response to public comment in just a couple of minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Next, Matt Byrne. Welcome, Matt.
Good evening. Matthew Byrne, 1623 Wood Duck Lane. I'm here in support of the proposed site plan for the restaurant for IG Holdings. Just wanted to, unfortunately, I have a previous engagement, I won't be able to stay for the full discussion, but I do believe there's precedent for making accommodations for this site plan. I think there are probably a number of examples where there are accesses from a side street and still access left out onto the bypass, Lowe's being the primary example. And I sat on the planning board when we reviewed the site plan for the addition to the Presbyterian Church, and they still have a side entrance and an entrance off the highway. So again, I believe there's room for accommodation, and I would ask the board to look favorably on that request. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. Next, Bob Gabriel. Welcome.
Thank you. Been a while.
I know. You look great.
Thank you very much. You've kind of changed everything around on me here, and I don't see that, though, some of it. Anyway, my name is Bob Gabriel. I live on Canal Drive. Nice to see some of these faces. I won't say old faces, but just faces that I remember, because I'm old, too. Anyway, the reason I'm here today is because I'm very concerned about these people that pull out of the streets in our town, and they don't seem to know that, even though the stop signs are about 10 feet back to 15 feet back, average, I measured, on the feeder roads going into Third Street, Fifth Street, Ocean Age, Gers, et cetera, where we have traffic lights. And these people don't bother, they don't even make New York stops, they just come right out. I would, in other towns, I've seen where we've put, in fact, our town requires people to, or businesses, to put a white line where the cars would come out. And I would recommend, it wouldn't be a very costly thing, but it's something that can't be pulled down or knocked down like a stop sign can, but a white line across the side of the road, across the road, excuse me, which would be about 10 inches wide, or eight inches, whatever the town would require, and that would augment the stop sign and make it perfectly clear where the front of the vehicle is supposed to stop. And it would also make it easier for the police department to enforce. Maybe this would help with a little bit of public safety. I've been here since 1981, working with you all, and I really would like to see something like this thought about. I know Nags Head is doing it, and I know other towns are doing it, and it does make a big difference. I don't know what my chief is going to say about that, but anyway, that's what I have to say today. I have another subject I'm going to discuss in writing, but I'll do that at the next meeting that you have. And I thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment? Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm Marcia Johnson. I live at 1401 Harpoon Court, Off Landing Drive. And I just want to address some things that myself and my neighbors are concerned about with the Water Oak development. Certainly, we would like the Harpoon Court to be a court and not a thoroughfare. We just would like to bring that up once again. It's just very disheartening that that would be a thoroughfare. One reason is it's going right into that S-curve that is already quite dangerous, and people speed through there, whereas a children's bus stop, it just grit my teeth all the time seeing people flying through there. Police told me they could not monitor that S-curve by giving tickets because they can't get a clear shot on the radar. So there's no way to slow people down, evidently. It's, you know, that's upsetting. The other thing is, having people come through Harpoon Court, the majority of that neighborhood would use Harpoon Court for their thoroughfare because it's the quickest way to the bypass. The only thing is, all that traffic is going to go onto Landing Drive and then stuff up at the lights on the bypass. Whereas if the people came out of Water's Edge onto First Street, they would distribute to the end of First Light and the Landing Drive Light. Now, that Landing Drive Light, if the thoroughfare is going to go dump there, we've already got the Publix built up now, the Lows build up, and the traffic light is like two and a half cars to get out. That's all you get when that light turns green. So we're going to have a really major traffic problem there. While I'm on that, I'd also like to address the people pulling out of Lowe's now. There's so many trees along that sidewalk, people just pull out and they don't look good at the people coming down. I come out of there five times a day, and I'm always subject to somebody just pulling out in front of me from Lowe's. We're also asking that there not be any trucks, building trucks, painters, construction workers, gas companies, whatever, using Harpoon Court as a thoroughfare while that development is being built. We want that street not functional, if it is going to be a thoroughfare, that all construction vehicles have to go in through First Street. We don't need to hear all that construction going on. If you would please think about that. We'd also like to have the name kept Harpoon Court. If it's going to be cut through, it's been Harpoon Court for forever. All of our bills, all of our everything is through Harpoon Court. And to change it to Harpoon Drive, it's just difficult for, another difficult challenge for us to handle. So we'd like to have the speed limit coming out of Harpoon Court. If it is a thoroughfare, to please have it 15 miles per hour or less. There's children at play there, or pets, and it does go into a 15 mile an hour S-curve. So if you would, I would appreciate your thoughts about that. And it's a challenge for all of us, I know, but I appreciate your listening.
Thank you very much, Marcia. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay. Well, thank you for all who spoke. We'll move on to response to public comment. Susan, thank you again for coming, sharing the guides. They're wonderful. The comments on the League of Women Voters.
Thank you, as always.
Roy, thank you for taking the time to come tonight as well. So of the projects that you mentioned regarding estimated timelines or posting on the website, so the hotels in Killable Hills, Bay Drive, the bridge?
Yeah, the, was it the Wright and Royal Bridge? Got that one side cut off. We're using just one bridge now?
Right. That would have to come from NCDOT. Same thing with the bypass resurfacing, just we, and the town wouldn't have any...
I understand that, but you have the, maybe a greater ability than I do. Last time I tried to find that stuff, it's like the big runner running. But maybe post on your town's website, say, this is what's in progress, this is the original estimated completion date, and this is what we're showing now.
If we can find some timelines and see, I know with construction, I mean, we try to put information out.
We do have, we do have our projects, our capital projects are posted, such as Bay Drive. It shows when the construction started, the progress, and when it's scheduled to be completed. As far as private businesses such as the hotel, I guess the planning department has some kind of an idea, but is nothing, I mean, once they pull a permit, they've got a certain amount of time before they need to do something to keep that permit active, but we can't dictate what their construction schedule would be. But our projects are done monthly.
Right.
On our website. I would be happy to call NCDOT and ask those two questions. I'd be a little uncomfortable as to try to post that because I don't know how frequently it would change, but I'd be more than happy to look into that tomorrow.
And maybe they can provide a link if they do update.
It would be the link to.
Right. Which that would be.
That's what I was thinking, too.
Yeah, we could post that.
Their website.
So I'd be happy to make that call, and maybe if you could link me your contact information?
I wrote it on that sheet, my email address.
Okay.
Thank you. Email address here. And then these other items, I think, in fairness to staff, I made note of them, and they'll be captured in the minutes. I think we can look into and see. Exploring, I may have mentioned trash schedule, the bicycle stencils, and another note I made was the parking lot. So I think staff can look into these items, and then we'll have follow-up back up with you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Let's see. Matt, I know he had to leave, but we'll address that as an agenda item. And Bob, your, those notes.
If we, if we, if we could just ask Bob if he would get up with Steve Albright, our public services director?
Yes, ma'am.
And maybe?
I would be glad to.
And discuss that with them, because I'm not sure I totally visualize what you're saying.
Yes, ma'am.
And, right, and maybe?
I visualize it three or four times a day when I try to go down to breakfast.
That's a great suggestion. Yeah, let them kind of take a look at it, and then they can also evaluate what Nags Head's doing.
I've thought about the same thing recently.
Yes, ma'am.
Where do you stop?
I would be glad to, Debbie, anytime.
Okay. Just coordinate it with, you know Steve, he's right behind you in the green. And then we'll follow back, I'll follow back up with the board on that outcome. Okay?
And then Marcia, thank you for bringing your concerns forward. Some guidance from UW, too, on some of the things we, as a board, have taken action on, and I don't know what of the things were listed can be re-looked at and what cannot.
Well, we do have, we do have that site as an agenda item, so some of those items can be discussed. But that is the cut through. I mean, she's right, as far as prohibiting vehicles and that, that would definitely be something we would need to look more into. I don't think we can make the speed limit 15, but I'll defer to Dana.
I would defer to the engineer. Because they always, let's engineer make the decision on what traffic needs to speed it.
Well, I know we have an agenda, I just wasn't, I know at our, it wasn't the last meeting, but two meetings ago, maybe it was two meetings ago, when we approved the site plan for the subdivision, that cut through was on there, and we approved it. So I guess that was my question, as I know we're going to be taking another look tonight, that at what point have we gone too far to make a change that? And have we already passed that point for eliminating the cut through? I just wonder where we?
Right. The cut, no, ma'am, the cut through has been approved.
So we don't have the ability to change that, of the different requests, because I know there are a number of requests, so we can still look at this when we go to the agenda item, but that specific request is no longer our ability to change that.
Right. And it's connection. I wouldn't exactly call it a cut through because there's no land transfers or, you know?
It's a connector street.
It's a connector street. It's not a cut through.
We were using the wrong term.
Yeah. It's a connection, and that connection was approved by the board when you approved the preliminary plaque.
That's right. Just wanted to make sure that we weren't thinking we could do something that we don't have the ability to do at this point. But some of the other concerns that were brought forth, we can evaluate and discuss. So we will do that shortly when we reach that agenda item. Okay. Anyone else have any other comments or response to public? Thank you. We will move on then to introductions and presentations, and welcome Ms. Tammy Montiel here with the Community Care Clinic of Dare, the annual report. Welcome, Tammy.
How are you? Should I sit up here?
Yes, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tammy Montiel. I'm a nurse and a case manager of the Community Care Clinic of Dare, which is in Nags Head that services anyone working or living in Dare County. And our organization, a nonprofit free clinic, provides high-quality primary care in a dignified and professional setting. And we are happy to provide also medication assistance and health and modest education. We proudly have a yoga room and meditation area for our patients, and we feel like we kind of are able to give them a lot of high-quality, sort of customized care that you couldn't really get in a free clinic. Currently, I'll back up a little bit, the Community Care Clinic of Dare was born out of a health assessment that was done in 2002, and it identified that we had approximately 24% of the population that did not have access to any kind of insurance. So with that, there was a collaboration between Almar Hospital Foundation, the Outer Banks Hospital, and the Dare County Health Department that came together and decided that we needed a place to send these folks so that they could get primary care, medication assistance, and also health and modest education to help them monitor their chronic disease conditions. So in 2005, we were born, and we moved around a little bit, but in the last five years, we are at the original medical center of the Outer Banks in Nags Head, next to Peak Resources. And so we often have patients come in that will tell us, you know, I think I might have been born here. And we say, well, you probably were, or I had stitches here, I had my arm casted here. So I think it's great karma that we're actually back in this original building. Nags Head actually has been very kind to us, and we hope that's our home for a very long time. Killable Hills is a great supporter of us, and I will tell you that a majority, the majority of our patients come from the zip code. The people that we take care of are hardworking folks that just fall between their cracks, can't afford insurance, they need to pay their rent, put food on the table, pay their electric bill. So we're there to make sure that they manage their chronic disease conditions like diabetes, high cholesterol, hypertension, so that they can go to work. And that's really what we're there for. Last year, we wrote off $1.5 million worth of free medication assistance, MRI, CT scan, x-ray, ultrasound, lab work, and we keep these folks working because they're going to go to work probably anyway. We don't want them to go to work sick, we don't want them to go to work with their hypertension out of control or their diabetes not managed. So thankfully, we're able to provide all of those things for our patients and all of that care. Since inception, we have seen over 4,000 patients, and we currently take care of over 500 patients. At our last board meeting, it was decided that we would raise our threshold to 300% of the poverty limit, which is pretty exceptional, and actually will probably bring us even more patients, which we are happy to take care of. Everyone there loves their jobs. We are funded partly by different grants that we write. The hospital's a good support for us as well. And with all of that, in collaboration with the tremendous volunteer staff that we have, that some have been coming since inception, week after week after week. So it's great continuity of care for our patients, they see familiar faces, we have Spanish-speaking interpreters and nurses, and we're trying, we have a couple fundraisers every year. Dr. Sanchez is on our board, a medical director. He does a big jazz concert for us every October, and we, this past year, brought in close to $10,000 with that one event. Something to look forward to, and I hope the folks of Killable Hills will all support this, is May 11th, we're having another over-the-counter event, open to anyone and everyone in the community, and we are giving away, again, probably close to about $130,000 worth of over-the-counter items, from Band-Aids to Aespanages, to vitamins, to Motrin, to Tylenol, to cough medicine. And that event this year will actually be held mania at the COA campus on May 11th. So from 11:00 to 3:00, send your friends and neighbors down there to pick up a couple of things to throw into their medicine cabinet, things they might need for the summer. They have things like sunscreen. It's just a great way to pay back, and all these items are in date, nothing's expired. Basically, they're changing maybe the label, they're discontinuing the items. But Metasis is also a big supporter of us out in Charlotte, and they're bringing that event to us for the third time. So I hope you all come. And we really thank you so much for supporting us. Like I say, we take care of people, we love what we do, and, you know, healthy and well people that are serving your food and cleaning your hotel rooms, you know, we're all here together, and if we keep them healthy and well, the whole community benefits from that. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you very much.
I don't stay, but it's fried chicken night throwing down. I'm going to go squirt my husband for a little while.
Thank you. Okay. We'll move on then to new business, new business item number one, the site plan review. This is with IG Holdings LLC at 1301 South Corotian Highway in the commercial zone that proposed 3,000 square foot restaurant with 32 parking spaces and associated site modifications. Welcome. How are you doing?
Do you want me to present it?
Do you, would you like to start with presenting?
Sure. My name is John Delucio. I'm from Almar, Los Angeles. Sir, I heard that the bypass was going to be overlaid next year and a half, about a month ago. Great. I'm representing IG Holdings, who is a local developer here in town. Probably all know him. He's brought some very nice developments. The project would be the redevelopment of the quarter of Atlantic Street and the bypass, where the Bizport and the Advanced Tree, I think, was their tree service. I'll ask you the same question I asked the planning board, because I know where we're going to go with this, and it's all about the driveway that's on the bypass. Where's a special exception for the national corporations, since we seem to be giving national corporations driveway cuts to the bypass, but not our local people? I don't think it's fair. What we have here in this situation is a very nice developed site plan. We have an existing driveway on the bypass. We have used existing driveways on the bypass. We have used existing driveways on the bypass before. So to have one attorney's opinion that we can't use an existing driveway, I question that. Because we haven't been consistent. I mean, I could name more than just the couple that I've named. And the brewing station, when we redid the brewing station, we reused the J.K.'s driveway. We didn't pay at Goddard Street, which is right next to the brewing station's parking lot. Didn't make sense to do that. But we haven't been consistent in this town. We've given Lowe's a driveway bypass to the, bypass cut to the driveway. We've given, we've given Harris Teeter a cut to the bypass. We've been told that the two properties next to DVO can't have a driveway bypass because they have a backstreet. We just approved a Marriott that has three other rightways that touch it. And granted, the driveway on the beach road was the whole frontage of that when it was the restaurant and the hotel that was there. And they're narrowing it. They're still being given a driveway to the bypass. Even in, not in, in compliance with, with what we've been told and what your ordinance says. Now, we're not asking you for a bypass driveway. I'm not asking you for a driveway on the bypass move. I'm asking you to let us use an existing driveway that is on the bypass. My client's willing to make it safer. He's willing to make it a right-handout egress. The site plan works well with the configuration that we have it in. So I don't understand why our business road, I, I can understand that we don't want more driveways added to the bypass. I can understand that. And I can understand why wanting our driveways to be made safer that are on the bypass. My client intends to do that with this. I'll tell you, like I told the planning board, my client has not purchased this property yet. The only reason he was interested in this property is because it did have an access to the bypass. It's a small lot, it's irregularly shaped, it's not rectangular like a lot of our properties. I'm not sure my client will develop this property or purchase this property at the, at the price that he's willing to pay for it now without being able to utilize the driveway. I will tell you that he's willing to make the driveway safer. Everything else, I think, we've discussed on the site plan. I think we're in compliance with, with all of the other stormwater and wastewater. Would love to bring you a very nice new restaurant here on the corner of Atlantic Street. It's not a national chain, I've told a couple of people that. It's some local folks that would like to have a restaurant there. Mr. Gloss is willing to build it for them. And, but I'm not sure he's willing to do any of this or purchase the property if he cannot utilize an existing driveway. That driveway was permitted at one time. I know the opinions that, that have been issued. But I don't think it would be unfair to our local businesses not letting people use existing improvements to the bypass, even if they're willing to improve the improvements and make them safer. I'll stop there, take any questions.
Thank you, John. Comments or questions for John? Is it the video? Discussion? Questions for him?
I don't think, I don't think it's a matter of whether it's a local or national change, John. I think the attorney's letter was quite clear and it would stand regardless of who the intended purchaser was or the, who the intended builder was. And I've looked over his letter and I haven't agreed with our town attorney on the issue.
My point is just we haven't been consistent. This town has not been consistent.
I hear you.
I hear you too on the consistencies piece. And that is something we'll take into consideration. But I agree with the attorney as well.
I think the attorney was pretty clear that it, you know, it doesn't comply with the town code. And I think that code was established to, you know, make sure that some of these cuts were, were not happening. They're willing bypass and go through the side streets, is what I understand. I would have to say I agree as well.
And I'm going to say I agree as well. And I, and I realize you're, you're citing inconsistencies, but I don't know that those inconsistencies were with this board.
And I, I also, I understand the comment of it's one attorney's opinion, but in my opinion, it's the most important attorney's opinion, because he's our attorney. He represents the town and keeps us hopefully out of trouble that we don't want to be in. So I understand that. I think it's, it sounds like we're kind of possibly where the planning board was. Other than this one issue, the site, the site plan looks good. We do need to take official action. That was a board, the board's ready and in a position to do that.
I think we're all agreement.
Would you like to make anything?
Sure. I'll make a motion to deny the site plan for IG Holdings LLC thirteen oh one South Corotan Highway on, in the commercial zone, proposed three thousand square foot restaurant, thirty-two parking spaces and associated modifications for failure to comply with the town code.
Is the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, John. Next item of business is the water subdivision right-of-way improvement plan. Meredith?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. In your packet, you will see a, it's very similar to the preliminary plat you saw at the board meeting where you approved the preliminary plat. This plat, however, has phases that are outlined. The board had indicated that they were bringing this plan back to the public. What we'd like to do is the, the developer does have the intentions of making these right-of-ways public. And with that in mind, we would like the, the Public Services Department and engineer to do the final improved plans on the engineering so that when they are completed, we can accept them. If they are not to the town standard, they would have to become private roads, which poses some difficulties later. So if the town attorney and the town engineer, I mean, town engineer and the Public Services Department approve the construction plans, then we'll ensure that they'll meet all of our standards and that we can accept them at that time. The other part of this is to approve the phasing. By approving the phasing, if they finish phase one, we would be able to accept phase one streets so that they could issue, be issued building permits. If the phasing's not in place, they would have to construct all of the infrastructure improvements before we could issue right, uh, permits. Because you have to have a right-of-way and water to be, to get a building permit. So the phasing will allow them to do this in three separate phases so that they can move forward with the construction of the homes as the infrastructure may be still be, being developed in the other phases. And I'll address any questions that you have from the public comment, if you would like me to.
Thank you. Questions? I have a question. So phase one includes lots fourteen to twenty-seven and fifty-one to seventy. And I think I'm starting to hit that age where I might need those readers.
No, you're not. But it's difficult.
It is very small.
This is small with readers.
But I'm like, wow. If I'm trying to see where all of these lots are and what, what that encompasses, encompasses both. I'm trying to understand what then has to be done in this phase for phase one.
They would have, they would have to build, they would have to build all of the infrastructure and create the connection at Harpoon Drive. And have the, have the water, the Public Services Department and the, the, it's, what is it, Deener? Do the water testing, have the water lines accepted, have the ASBIL survey done, have the engineer approve those surveys with the stormwater. And then they would bring that to the board for the board to accept those rights-of-ways. When those rights-of-way were accepted by the board, a plat would be filed with the Register of Deeds. And then they would become town rights-of-way. And we would become responsible for the road after it had met all of our standards and passed all of the state and local requirements. And then it would be added to our power bill. For power bills. That would be part of the approval, yes. They have applied for their sedimentation erosion control permit. And I will tell you just to add on to Ms. Johnson's, in the sedimentation erosion control permit, their construction entrances are on First Street. There's actually silt fence that will block Harpoon Drive until that part of the right-of-way is complete. So there will not be construction traffic on Harpoon Drive during the construction of the infrastructure. I don't know that, I don't know about during the construction of the individual homes. But during the infrastructure construction, there will be, that is not a construction interest and will not be used as one.
Okay, I think when we discussed it, that they said there would not be a connection created until everything was done. Now, what does everything mean? The houses or phase one, two, and three? Or when we discussed the other night, that they said there wasn't even going to be a connection until...
Phase one of the infrastructure is what they have here. Now, whether they make that connection then or they wait, that would be something that would be up to them. But I believe that they would have to make it to be able to get the water line and wastewater approvals. It's, it's...
To actually connect the road. Because they could bring that through Harpoon.
That would be, that would be a construction sequence for the developer. That would not be something the town controls. They are showing it as part of phase one. So the town would expect it to be constructed as part of phase one.
Once the infrastructure is done and individual home is being built, there wouldn't be any restriction on painters or contractors or coming in. There wouldn't be any restrictions on those.
That would be difficult to enforce, no, sir. I'm not sure. Did you just drop pickup trucks or did you go?
And do I remember correctly from our meeting that...
But the heavy equipment that's regarded for the infrastructure in their sedimentation erosion control plan, their construction entrances are on First Street. And they have to use those for that purpose. And that's the...
The big stuff.
The big stuff, the asphalt trucks, the back, the big backos, the dump trucks, the tree removers, the, all the, all the stuff kids love to watch. That is a construction entrance off of First Street. And the silt fence will block any connections at Harpoon Drive at that time.
But it does really make this a lot crisper. Sorry. I'm gonna, I've got to get mine and check up.
Sorry.
And at one of Marcia's other requests regarding speed limit, that we wouldn't be able to have an answer tonight, but we can...
That would also be addressed with the acceptance of the street. The recommendation for the street speed limit and all signage would be part of that acceptance of the street and how that was going to be done. And changed to our official power bill. And traffic map. So both the things, those things will happen as the infrastructure is completed.
Does anyone else have any other questions or... The board is so prepared to make, take action tonight. Stats recommending approval of the water subdivision construction, phasing, and right-of-way improvement plan, subject to the conditions listed in the memo.
I'll make a motion to approve the water subdivision construction, phasing, and right-of-way improvement plan subject to the conditions listed above.
I'll second that.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? And also at a separate time, we, I don't know if we ever chief here tonight looking at just the traffic flow and the, you know. I know another concern is that S curve, I get it. I don't know that my boys will ever be allowed to ride their bikes back there from where we live on landing. So I don't know if that's something we can talk about if there's any other ideas or when we're looking at this.
Is there also along, kind of along with Bob, what he's saying, but in both S curves, a center line? In, in both, one down by your house and the one down by Harpoon Court, a center line drawn because of the, people take the speed and they cross over to the other lane?
Yeah. Many of us know exactly what you're talking about. So we'll talk, we'll see if we have any ideas.
Civil enough, you know, it would just be...
I don't know if there's anything we can do, but we can certainly have a conversation.
Thank you.
I appreciate you. All right, we'll move on then to item number three, appointments. We have a couple of appointments tonight. One is an alternate and a regular position to the Board of Adjustment. Blake Culpepper's alternate term and Ron Seidman's regular term on the Board of Adjustment, both expire in May and both have expressed a desire to be reconsidered. We also have Christine Stafford's position on the Dangerous Animal Appeal Board. Her term is set to expire in May as well. And she has expressed an interest in being considered for reappointment. We can address these individually or in one motion. The board's pleasure.
I'd like to make a motion that we reappoint Blake Culpepper and Ron Seidman to the Board of Adjustments and Christine Stafford to Dangerous Animal Appeals Board.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please sign by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay, we'll move on then to item number four. This is a request for NCDOT Ocean Outfalls Extensions. Steve, welcome and thanks for all your work on this. One of the projects has been keeping you busy, right?
Just one of the two.
That's right.
Yeah, it was interesting putting this together, that these things in some form or another are over fifty years old. So I don't know if I'm the stepfather, because they're not really, you know, they're DOTs, not really the towns, but it's kind of interesting. I do feel some ownership, definitely. Frustrating sometimes, but we need them.
So any questions? As I understand it, the recommendation is to have the twenty-foot extension on the three outfall pipes, which then takes it further into surf and hopefully will help prevent the backups as frequent as we've been getting them. And so with that, we would, which is in the packet, send a formal letter to NCDOT requesting their assistance with the permitting for those and then funding for those extensions. That's the gist of it?
That's the gist of it. Push that.
You'd be the signature on the air.
Some questions about this?
Seems to make more sense.
I think one of the biggest things that I saw in this was probably the reliability issue, that there was a lot of concern about the reliability of, of the outfalls, of being able to, you know, do what they originally were designed to do, and that was to drain the southern part of the town. I think that probably everybody's aware that we do have some major issues with some flooding in our town. And I think that I noticed today that some of the public works people were out cleaning a ditch not too far from my house. And, and they've been doing a very good job of trying to get these ditches clean and flowing. I think probably one of the bottlenecks, though, is in some of these outfall ditches. I, I happen to be of the opinion at the same time that I think the problem's bigger than maybe just Kill Devil Hills. I, I would like to see some action as far as at least investigating whether... Um, I, I would like to see some action as far as at least investigating whether another municipality, like Naggs Head, maybe Kitty Hawk, would like to join with us to look at our different systems and find out if there can be concerted effort within C D O T to improve the drainage systems. That could be done, uh, either you could possibly bring it up at one of your mayor meetings, um, and talk to the other two mayors and see if they have any desire to address it from a task force level, uh, where we could maybe appoint our public works director, uh, with their public works director and, and perhaps a board member, um, to survey these different drainage systems and see if they benefit each other. Uh, that, that would be my thought process. I, I think we need some help, uh, you know, in trying to address the drainage problem. I think it's a big issue.
Thank you. Any other comments or... Back to the specific action? Is the board ready to take action?
You willing to sign the letter?
Well, I need your approval as a board, so I can sign the letter, but yes.
I'll make a motion. I make a motion to authorize a formal letter to NCDOT requesting their assistance in permitting and funding the outfall extensions.
Is a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, please signal saying aye.
Aye.
Give me a post. Thank you.
Thank you. And, um, talking with Brian Shook, who's the NCDOT Bridge Maintenance, um, representative that's kind of looking out for, for them, um, they are intending to do the repairs that we talked about a year ago, um, at Lake Drive in late April, um, trying to let the water temps warm up and the, the conditions, 'cause the guys are gonna have to get, it's gonna be a wet job. And so, they're trying to have the weather moderate, but they, they do supposedly have all the parts and pieces to, um, fix Lake Drive. I know you guys as a board have got some emails or questions from some citizens on that, but that is still, um, I'm told moving forward.
Great, thank you, thank you. And Terry, I think we've had another mayor's luncheon on the sixteenth of this month, so talk to them and obviously, we'll see if discussions have already been, been in progress. All right, we will move on then to item number five, a request to eliminate term limits for the Community Appearance Commission and possible ordinance adoption. Sue, welcome, is our chair of the Community Appearance Commission. So basically, the recommendation before us is to eliminate, eliminate the term limit, which we could do, um, by adopting the attached amendment, um, to section thirty-one point twenty, Appearance Commission established. So, any thoughts on this?
I don't see any problem with, uh, going along with eliminating the term limit.
I'm fine with it too. It's great to have people who are willing to serve and willing to lead, and that experience is valuable. I don't need some limit on that, so this is a good idea.
My bird, I'll fix it.
I think it's a great idea as well. I think that they have, like, like Sue had pointed out, they have some, some projects that they're working on now that, uh, are gonna be a little extended, extended time, and, uh, I think that they have a good group, uh, working on that now, and I think it would be a good move.
Okay, sounds like there's consensus, but so I'd like to make a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached amendment to thirty-one point two zero Appearance Commission Establishment of the Town, of the Town Code, which eliminates term limitations on the CAC.
Motion?
Second.
Second? Any other discussion? All those in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Give me a post. Great, thank you, thanks for bringing that over.
And Sue, thank you for your leadership on Community Appearance Commission. It's noticed and appreciated, thank you.
Thank you, John.
We'll move on to committee reports, does anyone have anything to share this evening?
I do.
Just as I looks like we did.
Very great. I'm gonna do the, uh, update on the tourism board meeting for last one. If y'all wanna find.
Hi, Lee Nettles here with your Dare County Tourism Board Meeting Recap from the March fifteenth meeting.
Hi, Lee Nettles here with your Dare County Tourism Board Meeting Recap from the March fifteenth meeting. First, we heard from the Budget and Finance Committee with the Meals and Occupancy Report for the month of January. January, of course, is a relatively small month in the overall scheme of things. On the occupancy side, we saw a drop of less than one percent, so basically flat. We were working off of strong numbers in January two thousand seventeen, though, uh, where we saw a fourteen percent increase in occupancy. For the, um, the calendar year, obviously, that's the first month, but we do have the full year for two thousand seventeen compared to two thousand sixteen. For occupancy, we saw a growth of almost six percent. On the meal side for January, we saw a drop of four percent. Again, this is a relatively small month in the, uh, scheme of the overall year, so we'll look forward to picking those numbers up. For the full calendar year comparison, two thousand seventeen to two thousand sixteen, we also saw a growth of almost six percent on the meal side. Next, we heard from the Steering Committee. Every year, the Steering Committee takes a look at fireworks applications for July fourth. This year, we received four applications and money was awarded to each of those four applicants. Once again, you can look forward to July fourth fireworks in the towns of Manio, Kill Double Hills, Naggs Head, and in the village of Avon. As you know, we're getting into the spring season, and the spring season means events. Taste of the Beach is happening this weekend. We finished Starry Nights down in Hatteras Village not too long ago, and the Kelly's St. Patrick's Day Parade, among many other great events that are happening in the Outer Banks. This has long since been a strategy of the Dare County Tourism Board as a way to try and grow shoulder season and off-season visitation. One way that we do this, in addition to just promoting the events, is to help with grant funding. In order to be eligible for an event grant, you either have to be a Dare County governmental entity or a Dare County nonprofit. This year, we received twenty-one applications. Each of those applications had some pretty strong merits. The Grants Committee took a look at each of them and spent about two and a half hours, actually, it was a rather lengthy meeting, uh, but a lot of hard work, a lot of good work. Of those applications, we saw some returning favorites like the Seafood Festival, the Outer Banks Marathon, Day at the Docks, Duck Jazz Festival, just to mention a few. We also saw some, uh, new and newish events, uh, a first-year event, Lost Colony Wine and Culinary Festival, got off to a great start last year. If you didn't have a chance to make it out, you better book it this time around. So, when the Grants Committee, uh, sets about evaluating these different applications, we judge them in terms of their tourism impact. What's the tourism return on the investment? So specifically, we're looking at what the projections are for out-of-market visitation, again, during the less than peak months. What's the potential for that event to grow? What's the, uh, out-of-pocket cost? Basically, just trying to determine, uh, what kind of return and what kind of prospects that event, uh, represents. I'm pleased to report that after that thorough evaluation, the Grants Committee determined that each of the twenty-one applications had merit and deserved funding. Each received funding of some kind. Overall, the Grants Committee, uh, and then made its recommendation to the full board, and the full board approved over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars for this wave of event grants. That's great news. The events not only give the folks that live here great things to do throughout the year and, uh, especially during the less than peak months, when we actually have time to go out and enjoy them, but oftentimes, uh, these events serve as important fundraising tools for nonprofits, so we're able to benefit the community in, uh, in a variety of ways. So, the Grants Committee, thank you for your hard work and the board's support. We'll look forward to those events coming online. For a full list of the grant awards, the recipients, and the amounts, go to outerbanks.org/grants. The final item on the agenda for March was a report from the Outer Banks Visitors Bureau Staff regarding marketing, some, uh, new campaigns that are out there. We have done something this year that we've never tried before. It's a cooperative advertising venture with the State Tourism Office, and it's transit advertising in, uh, Washington DC. So, our ads are appearing on the backs of buses, inside the buses, and inside of the transit shelters. Oftentimes, transit advertising kind of skews to a lower income, but not in DC. It's, uh, skews higher, uh, for those government workers, and it's, uh, right on target for us, so we think it's an interesting new way to get into this crowded market. The idea that, uh, we're using in that transit advertising is based around a really simple concept, which is comparing and contrasting city life, which in a lot of ways can feel like a boxed-in environment with that of the Outer Banks, the OBX, and just the open spaces and the, the relaxation and the relief that that brings. That idea, we thought, might be appropriate also for a spring television campaign. We adapted it for spring TV, and those ads are running now. Maybe you've seen them, the box OBX. Uh, they start at March nineteenth, they'll run through April twenty-second in Raleigh-Durham, Greensboro, Richmond, the Tidewater area, and Pittsburgh. It's also running statewide in North Carolina on PBS. So, take a look, be on the lookout for it. Uh, I hope you enjoy the campaign as much as we do. We'd like to invite you, as always, to an upcoming meeting of the Tourism Board this next time, and April nineteenth, we will be on the road. We're gonna be meeting at Captain George's in Kill Double Hills, nine o'clock in the morning. Hope you can get out there and see us. If not, uh, be on the lookout for the next Tourism Board Meeting Recap. Thank you for your time, hope you're having a great spring, and, uh, we'll, we'll see you around town.
I think that's actually a cool one.
Yeah, you're right.
There's several more of them. First time I saw them, just kinda neat to watch that morph into OBX. And by the way, um, I'm on the Steering Committee and the Grants Committee, and each of the four requests for fireworks are each getting ten thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars, so that would help us out a great deal.
Thank you, Michael.
And, I got another one. You got that ready there, Michael? Cameron? This is about the, uh, the dog park. It's not animated. So you have to concentrate a little more. Anyway. They're already starting to do a little bit of clearing over there. Took a walk over there a couple of times, assuming I was the dog, and, uh, it's pretty clear. As you can see right here, um, the bottom part where this teal-looking dog is right here is where the skate park is, and that strip is on the left where that two hundred and fifty-foot, uh, marker is. And it's pretty self-explanatory, there's a small dog, large dog, um, and the amenities that are listed on the right, watering stations, uh, covered areas, benches, amusements, I don't know, a lot of that trips. A lot of it's gonna be tree-covered, which I'm glad to hear, 'cause there'll be some shade, uh, and there will be some turf also, and it will be irrigated. And the parking, of course, and restrooms are available at the aviation park. And, uh, on the next slide, it tells us how much it's gonna cost approximately. And, uh, that's kind of, it's still a little bit up in the air. We're gonna try to figure out if we can get some, uh, grant money for that, that'd be nice. And Sue had a, had, uh, at our last meeting, Sue expressed a desire to help out with, um, the park in any way that she could, and we might get together and see if we can gather a few more folks and see if we can go around and get some sponsorships. Similar situation is with, uh, Daryl, so nicely did with the, uh, this golf course. I think that would help us out a lot. Anyway, that's where we are in the dog park, and that money is in the budget, as you see right there, and if we do get grants or sponsorships, that, we can, uh, save a little bit of that money. And I think that's all I have. Yep. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything to report?
I have two things to report. Back on March twenty-first, the, uh, Community Appearance Commission, we had our first subcommittee on addressing cigarette butts, referencing all the beach. I know, um, Dave Elder's here, and I mean, he had a really neat idea that he shared with us about, kind of a prototype for cigarette receptacles. Uh, are you prepared to talk about that today or would like to come?
Actually, actually, can you pull up a web, a website? Um, I think it's gonna be, I, I found a, a site on the internet, I'll go over here if you would like, uh, a site on the internet that had, part of the issue that I've seen dealing with litter on the beach, dealing with trash on the beach is, we don't really know what we're, how to get people to stop doing something they're doing. And it's, uh, ballots and butts, cigarette butts. If you'd sort for that, you might come up on a Google search or something. And basically, what this is, is it's two, it's a, it's a container, and it has two different glass-fronted bits, and it has room at the top for a question, and then you get to pick, you know, who's gonna win in a battle, Superman or Batman. You pick whichever side you get, or football team, soccer. And that way, it gets people to kind of buy into getting the cigarette butts put in a good place. Um, they, they get to vote, and you'll be able to very clearly see if people would deposit their cigarette butts voted for this option. And what they've seen with these, um, these containers is it's actually caused people to pick up cigarette butts to vote, which would be an interesting thing. What, I think we have a little bit of an opportunity, and we spoke a great deal about this at the meeting. This is, this is an example. We spoke a great deal about this at the meeting. Since we're kind of backed right up against the summer, I look at this as an opportunity, because we don't really, I'm not quite exactly sure how to get people to change their behavior. They have to wanna change their behavior, this is a possibility. I'm not saying that, saying that this is a, a, an easy fix, but why not come up with a pilot plan? I, I'm willing to try to come up with something like this, uh, make sure it's, uh, something that is not going to overburge your staff, put it up at a few locations, and learn about, one, where they should be put, should they be on the beach, should they be in the beach access, it's not a parking area. What kind of traffic we're looking at, what kind of cycle that we need to have as far as, you know, how long it takes to fill something like this out. We also talked about the, the PVC pipe containers, um, and the positive, um, aspects that are there with that, but also, you know, trying to make it work as well as we can to, um, to have as little effect with as much, um, positive effect. I'm very, very concerned and very kind of looking at, um, this to try to make it not have as much impact visually as possible. Make it low-impact, uh, if that, if that, uh, if that, something like that were in present in an area, if we could paint it up with good artwork by young people with very bright colors, that would be good, to try to get people on board. The concern that I have, and we spoke about it in the meeting, was when you have, uh, representing lifeguards in, in this situation, when you have lifeguards that are put in a position where they are asking people to modify their behavior, that's not a great conversation, that very often can go wrong very quickly. My staff is good at having that conversation, definitely, but at the same time, when it takes a turn, it takes a turn very quickly. We need to, I, I need to be able to inform my staff and support them in, as, as, um, as broad a manner as possible, but I don't want them to get into a situation where it is an adversarial relationship. Um, I, I'd like to try to get people, and I think we all agree, that the goal here is to get people to advocate for the removal of items to be left behind on the beach, be they cigarette butts, or tents, or any other trash or debris. Um, and that's, this, this is something, you know, we talked about trying to knock this out at, uh, several locations with the PVC pipe, and then some of the more trafficked accesses like the bathhouse and Hayman Street, some of the bigger parking lots that are more, um, more commonly accessed with perhaps these, just to see if it causes a buzz, to see if it, if it becomes topical, because I have a feeling that something like this could actually create a little bit of traction toward good. Um, I, I have been in many conversations with people about removing... I, I have been in many conversations with people about removing cigarette butts from the beach and other trash on the beach. It, it very, it goes badly very quick, as Bob can also attest back in the day when he was doing it. This is something that can, that can go sideways very quickly. But if we handle this in the right way and learn about it perhaps this year, then maybe we can educate the process and not create a large problem by doing, trying to do the right thing, but doing it perhaps in the wrong way. It's never really what we do, it's always how we do it.
Yeah, I know, we've talked about other things at the beach, about, you know, dogs or leaving things on the beach. We don't want our lifeguards to be police persons. We want them to be lifeguards. We don't want them, as you said, acting in a manner with the public that could cause trouble. They, you know, they're, something like this would be, it's kind of benign, and it sends a message without having to get in people's faces.
And it'll be very clear to us, just even by looking at this, to see what kind of impact it's having. If it's not used, then that's an easy thing to back away from. It's not a big outlay, it's not a big presence. If it works, it works. If it doesn't work, we tried. And I think that, to some degree, also is a good foot forward. It's important to try something new. But that being said, let's not maybe try something huge. Let's try to learn from the process. I think it's a great idea. I'm going to be, I'm going to be coddling something like this together, so make, you know, let me know if I haven't made you proud.
Don't worry, you made us proud, Dave.
Out of the Wave Riders Association, they have several cylinder-shaped PVC pipe cigarette receptacles, and they're looking at now putting about nine or 10 of them up in Kill Devil Hills. They have a volunteer-based group that are trying to organize to actually service them, so town, we would be responsible for emptying them normally. Now, we would be aware if we were, you know, as town staff was like, emptying the trash on the beach and stuff overflowing, maybe to step in and address it then, but the Wave Riders, they are planning to just kind of roll these out and put together a volunteer-based staff for servicing, but there really shouldn't be minimal town participation on that. There is a real simple, it's just a, yeah, two-and-a-half, three-foot-long PVC pipe with a cover at the top and bottom of the place to insert a cigarette butt, and they wouldn't require that much attention because they'd hold so much, it would take a long time to get to full capacity. But we're all working on it, we're working with a few different groups, and, you know, it was our first meeting, so we're just getting started. The next episode that we're trying to get to is to create a clever committee name. Really don't have a name yet, and then establish a mission statement, and we can all rally around and go from there. March 22nd, we did our normal Community Appearance Commission meeting. We finalized plans for Trash Attack, which is April 21st, and I'm glad to see everybody there. We started a conversation around dressing the plastic bag issues in Kill Devil Hills. We bounced around a lot of ideas. Really what we'd like to do is draft a very, draft a letter that's very inclusive, ask people to kind of be more, spread awareness on plastic bags, that's something that, once that letter is, once we agree upon it, we will bring it to this board proper, see how the board felt about it, if we rolled it out. And then we would start that campaign with kind of smaller businesses that we already know are recycling-friendly, try to build some momentum before we would move on to the larger retailers, to bring it to them. Like, if we can say, hey, 20 local businesses already support this campaign, how do you guys feel about it? Instead of just showing an empty hand, and adding some more business support before we kind of go after the bigger targets that are beneficial. And the last meeting I had the pleasure of attending was the Saving Life Task Force meeting, April 20th. Saving Life Task Force contains a great job supporting our recovery community and also working in schools with young people to, and for drug and alcohol prevention. And that said, I would like to thank Captain Evans from the Kill Devil Hills Police Department, Special Investigator Donnie Barnett from the Sheriff Department, Chief Jean Collins from EMS, Roxanna Ballinger from the Health Department for their good presentation last month. It was informative and helpful, and I'm very happy that you came. And that's all I have for meeting reports.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
We will move on then to Commissioner's Agenda. Commissioner Gray, can you come across?
Nothing to say, Mayor.
I wanted to thank that man back there in the corner, Assistant Chief Harris. Yesterday, or last week, he met with me to talk about how the police department actually budgets weren't locked, and they already had a plan in place. We talked about it last month, but they have already addressed that in their supply line item budget, and I wanted to thank and acknowledge Chief Britt and the police department for being organized and having that in place, and thank you, gentlemen. I really appreciate that. I have a few questions for the board, I kind of want to stir up some thought, tell you guys feel about this. I think in Dare County, we do a really good job with transparency and utilizing technology to get these meetings out through YouTube and through Current TV. But how do you guys on the board, how does town staff feel about expanding that into potentially broadcasting our meetings on Facebook Live? Be more into the realms of social media. I know we may not have the capacity to do that now, but I just wanted to bounce an idea off you guys, how do you feel about using that forum for these meetings?
We didn't have a chance to edit out the goose.
They're not edited anyway, so.
I don't think those, I think the goose don't make the cut, but it can reach a lot of people. I mean, I, I'm the first to admit, I, too much of my wife do this thing, as most people do, and if you want to kind of touch lives and get out there, why not use the tool if it's something that's available? How do you guys feel about that?
What I'd like to suggest is, if there's consensus, I will take this to the GovEd Committee, and that would be a good forum to discuss this, since we're the ones that really have given all the towns the grant funding to, not grant, but LPDI funding to put all the equipment in place of the technology, and I think that would be a good place to vet this with. So, the boards, once consensus, I'll take it to that for next time, and I'll report back.
All right. Last thing I have tonight, would the board be interested in conducting a biannual citizen survey to complement our land use plan? This is a electronic survey only, so no mailers, that would be counted as cost prohibitive, but we, and by no means do I want to kind of repeat the whole land use plan. But I think that we do a, you know, a survey once every 10 years to see how people want to, how town to be developed. 10 years is a long time. And if it, you know, I asked Brian about, you know, how much do we invest just for the Survey Monkey survey to construct, or get the whole survey started last year? It was roughly 500 bucks. Would there be any, is the board interested at all in maybe every two years, every three years, having a supplemental survey based off questions we used in the land use plan survey to kind of keep, create, and keep that dialogue going with the community, not come back once every 10 years? Then have data we can pull from identifying changes, any trends, have things, if the legals move on any of this stuff. But, so, we can kind of get the public's feedback more than once a decade. I mean, they can always come in and talk through our meetings, and they definitely have a chance to, for their voice to be heard at the ballot box, but I would just see into the question, you know, once, every 10 years, that's a long, long time. And if it is not too expensive and possible, why not give it a shot? How do you guys feel about that?
I think if it was something that was static, if, in other words, it could be there and people could look at it online, or by whatever method, if it's a Survey Monkey or something else on Facebook. But if it would be something that would involve a lot of.
Yeah, it may not be the whole, it's just an idea stage now. It would not be the whole survey, a little time, but maybe a sample of the same questions so we could, it could be comparable to the original survey.
I think the thing with, with the most recent survey we did with Survey Monkey, I think the bulk of the cost is probably compiling everything. Many, many hours were spent doing that, am I correct?
But Survey Monkey's a great tool.
So, what I'm saying, that's, what I'm saying is, it would be, it would be there for anybody to look at it, would necessarily require staff to go in and look at it and compile and put together, and, you know, it could be something that had a running total of whatever the answers were, or something like that. But I know, you said, Brian said, it was like $500.
Yeah, yeah.
Probably what we paid on a Survey Monkey, I suppose. But there's much more than that was spent in staff time, am I correct? Yeah, well, I don't think we want to go that direction, but if we did something that would be just kind of benign and kind of static, online or on Facebook or wherever, just like a running.
Well, I'm of the mindset that Survey Monkey's a great tool. We use it a lot in public health. We also, when we do surveys, it's because we want to find out answers for a specific issue, or we want to get guidance on something going on. So, I have no objection to doing surveys. If we find a topic that we want to delve into more or get public's information on, you can use that as a great tool. I don't know that sending the land use plan, or even a modified version of that, really makes, I don't know that we're going to get a lot from that, because, you know, we did it 10 years ago, and it really didn't shift that much in 10 years. And I also, we want people, when they see land use survey, we want them to go, wow, I'm really, so I don't want to have survey fatigue by putting that out there, and then they think, well, I don't need to respond to that one because I responded a couple of years ago. That being said, I don't want to shoot the idea about, you know, getting the public engaged. If we think of something within the next couple of years, I'm like, gosh, it'd be really nice to have public input on more than the opportunities we have. I'm not opposed to that, but something specific that we, you know, go, okay, let's use this tool to garner information, that's just my two cents.
Yeah.
If you guys would like to manage that campaign, it's, using Survey Monkey's really easy. So, you can be trained in how to use it, and then you could put your question of the month. I think there's options out there.
Something to think about.
Something to think about. I like the idea of being more engaged with the public and finding creative ways to get their feedback and stuff, get more buy.
It's a good tool. Anything else?
This is what for.
You just thought people would turn in your answers to John at Walgreens.
Who brings them in the door?
Very good.
Thanks, John.
Randy, anything tonight?
Yes. Healthy Carolinians of the Outer Banks Aging Friendly Task Force will be doing a State of the Older Adult Conference on May the 10th at the Ramada Inn. You do need to preregister for that. I have the registration forms, I should have brought them tonight, but in perfect Randy style, I did not, but I have them right over there in that building called the Bonnet Center. So, if you want, if you want one of those, I can get them for you. The cost is free, which is as good as it gets. The conference is from 8:00 to 3:00 on May the 10th, and we're going to have Christina Bowen is going to be our keynote speaker, and we'll have breakout sessions that include aging in the home, access to healthcare, caregiver support, and transportation. So, I think it's going to be a great day. We try to do one of these every few years, it really needs to be done about every five years. Our last one was in 2009. The one prior to that was, I think, in 2005. So, we've, we've done quite a few of these over the years. And what we hope to do with this is not only give the folks that come information about what is already existing in Dare County for folks that are over the age, that are aging gracefully, those over the age of 50 or 55, but also, we're trying to find out what services people need. So, we're looking at it twofold there. So, and everybody's welcome, we're looking for, we're looking for seniors to come, we're looking for professionals to be there, family members who are looking for people who, whom they might be taking care of for somebody, just, it's all around a good day. We've got, we've got 11 vendors at this point. In fact, Walgreens is a vendor, and Outer Banks Hospital is a vendor, and Peak Resources is, we've got a whole bunch, a whole bunch of really good vendors. Department of Health and Human Services is a vendor, so I think it's going to be a really good day, lots of good information given, and I'm hoping to get some good information back. On a very similar front, another task force with Healthy Carolinians of the Outer Banks are a very busy bunch. The dementia task force is hosting the governor on Thursday at Duckwoods, and if anyone would like to come, let me know. That was by invitation only, but they've opened that up at this point, so we have a few seats left. So, if you would like to come, just let me know, and I will get you on that list. So, that is unfortunately not going to be for anybody watching this on TV, because it will probably have already happened by then, and it would be too late. But for anybody in the room, if you know you want to be there, let me know, and I will get you on that list.
When is it?
Thursday morning, 10:30. I think, maybe 10:15.
It's 10:15.
It's 10:15. Y'all should have invitations in your packet, but, but for some reason, I think they're probably already in your packets. Y'all should have gotten written invitations.
I've got mine in the mail.
Okay, well, mine didn't come in the mail, but maybe I just.
It's just on the.
Ah, it's probably mine.
They send it to the post.
Anyway.
Great. Anything else?
That's it, I'm good.
All right. Thank you, Randy. Mike?
No, I said nothing.
All right. We will move on then to Mayor's Agenda. In your packet this evening, there are a number of proclamations, and I'd like to just highlight those really quickly. There's a proclamation for National Autism Awareness Month, and in addition to that proclamation, you also see the picture of the great work that our Buildings and Grounds Department has done in creating the heart to display that for the month of April. April is also Child Abuse Prevention Month, Child Abuse Prevention Month. You probably noticed when you first come into town from the south, the cutouts of the children. It's also a picture up there right now. That's a campaign that's been going on for years by the Children and Youth Partnership. Those children, while they're cute, there's a serious implication with that, which is each of those children represent a child in Dare County that's been reported as a case of abuse or neglect, so it's to raise attention for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Also in your packet, there's a proclamation declaring April 16th through the 20th as Week of the Young Child, with an emphasis on early brain development and the importance of that. There's also a proclamation declaring April 22nd as Earth Day, and you'll notice a special note on that proclamation to our own trash attack that's happening in Kill Devil Hills. There's the American Cancer Society Relay for Life and the Dare County Relay for Life event is also included in your packet, a proclamation for those two events. And then also declaring May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and May 13th through the 19th as Police Week. So, in highlighting those, I'd like to make a motion that the board adopt these proclamations to commemorate and honor the events, issues, and peoples, people that are important and vital in our community.
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor, please sign off saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks. Thank you. I'd also like to point out, and you can mark your calendars, April 28th, it's a Saturday, at 9:00 AM is the Special Olympics Opening Ceremony and Games. Terry, you probably have some information, is the crew writing in that? I think they normally have.
I'll be there, and we will be loud.
Yeah, great. It's, that's a really nice way to kick off the opening ceremonies that you guys have been donating for several years, and it's really special. So, if you're available to come out that Saturday, yeah, it's a great way to kick off the Special Olympics. So, 9:00 AM is when the ceremony starts, Saturday, April 28th. Just a couple of other things that are not in your packet, just a reminder, and we have these placards here, and probably on the back there for bulk item collection. It begins Monday, April 16th, but you need to have your items separated into your piles by Sunday, April 15th, which is this coming Sunday. If you need any, any more information, please check out the town's website at kdhnc.com. Early voting, we, again, Kill Devil Hills is a voting site for early voting that actually begins next week, April 19th, Thursday, April 19th. Our meeting room will be used for early voting, Monday through Friday, from 10:00 to 2:00 during November voting. John already mentioned trash attacks, so thank you for that. Hope to, we have a big turnout there. Don't forget, we have a drug drop box that's been installed months and months ago, so if you have any unfinished prescriptions that you're not using, or over-the-counter medication that you'd like to get rid of, please, just, you can walk up at any time, day or night, and just drop them right in the box as you're going into the entrance of Town Hall. And then. then we, the Police Department takes care of discarding those appropriately, and they're incinerated once we collect them, so please don't flush old meds down the toilet, or just throw them out in the garbage can. And our next meeting, which is Wednesday, April 25th, is, we do this twice a year, where we don't really have a full set agenda, we have a public forum, so it's an opportunity to, for the public just to come have discussions with board members, so that is our next meeting, Wednesday, April 25th at 5:30 is our public forum. And the last thing to mention, the last Friday, the Health Department submitted a grant, it's a $20,000 grant to do a pilot post-lockson response project with the town of Kittle Hills if we receive this grant award. And basically, what we would do is use the Health Department personnel to follow up with anyone that is given the lockson, that we can then get their contact information to offer assistance with getting into treatment, or maybe it's information on the needle exchange program, maybe it's medication-assisted therapy, basically just to lend a hand to say, we've got supports here in the community if you're interested. What we'd like to do if we receive this grant, we'll know, we'll be notified in May, early May if we are, is then our staff will work with the Police Department directly to put this pilot into place for Kittle Hills, and we have the opportunity to apply for a much larger grant in May, that then we could maybe look at this on a county-wide level, so see what happens, but thanks to Chief and Assistant Chief and your team, we met, this came up really quickly that we might have this opportunity. The School of Government with UNC and Blue Cross Blue Shield are the funders of this grant, and it came up, and within two weeks, we had application letters of support and moved on it, so.
We just pulled data from the lockson given by Police Department or EMT data for in Kill Devil Hills.
We can't use EMT data because then you've got the HIPAA complication, so we will work with non-protected health information to be able to make those connections in this pilot, so that way we're not risking any HIPAA violations, yeah. We'll see where that goes, lots to learn from it, and that's why we're kind of classifying it as a pilot.
Very good.
And that is all I have this evening. Town manager's agenda? Starkey, welcome, you're filling in for our town attorney, for Casey, anything this evening under town attorney's agenda?
Nice to be with you all again, enjoy your meetings always, but I have nothing new.
Thank you for being here. Debbie, we'll move to the consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. This evening on the consent agenda, we have the minutes for the May 12th, 2018 meeting, February 2018, monthly report, request for the board to schedule a public hearing for the proposed amendment to Chapter 153 zoning, light industrial two-zone conditional uses for housing, and light industrial two-zone site requirements density, this is to eliminate the density bonus and modify density unit measure in the light industrial two zoning district. Approval of the consent agenda will schedule this item for public hearing on Monday, May 14th at 5:30 here in the administration, or the meeting room. Number four is a budget amendment to transfer additional funds needed for unexpected software for conversions of file attachments, for new record-keeping data, data integration, information software system in the Police Department. Number five is the recommended resolution authorizing sale and donation of unclaimed and bound property. Approval of the consent agenda will record the board's authorization for the donation or sale of unclaimed property in accordance with the requirements of the general statute. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
Thank you, Debbie.
Yes, ma'am.
Questions, comments, motion?
So moved.
Okay, thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Thank you.
All those in favor, please sign a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, thank you. Okay, we are back now for the second time set aside for public comment, I see Sue is ready, so welcome.
Thank you. Sue Kelly for the Community Apairance Commission. First, we want to thank you very much for agreeing to our request about term limits. We're excited, we have a great group of folks, and it would be great to continue this work. I want to thank Commissioner Windley and also Dave for bringing this information to us. This whole thing about butts and bags is pretty exciting, and we really have some potential to do some really good things, and it's exciting to be working on it. So many of you have mentioned that Trash Attack is coming up on the 21st, that's less than two weeks away, if you've never been, it's a lot of fun, and I've got some good food lined up for the folks who participate as well, and listen, there's so much trash, we all know this. These wind events we've had, I've never seen the town look trashier. We're also counting plastic bags this year, trying to get some more information about that whole thing. So, there will be no Community Apairance Commission meeting in April, we have a conflict with early voting in this room, so we will be meeting, the next meeting will be our regular fourth Thursday, which is May 24th at 8:30 in the morning, and we welcome people to come to that meeting. The next meeting of the So Far Unnamed Butts Committee is May 16th, that's, I believe, a Wednesday, and 6:00 PM in this room. And the last thing I want to say, Mayor Sheila, it's called presbyopia when you start needing those glasses to be able to read that print, and everybody gets it if you live long enough, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Showing my age. Thank you, Sue. Is there anyone else like, would like to speak? Yes, welcome back. I'm sorry, Dana, are you going to share?
Let Dana go first, she's young.
I just wanted to remind the commissioners and the general public, this weekend, Sunday the 15th, from 7:00 to 10:00, the half marathon, flying paratroop coming through our town, so there may be some traffic delays, and Mr. Ball and Diamond was interested in that, I'd just like for, put it out on record so they know that we may have delayed some traffic during that time.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you, Dana.
And Bob, help me then.
Thank you.
Members of the board, I have been coming to these meetings in this hall since this building was built, and went to the meetings in the other building, and I have to be honest with you and say that I am thoroughly impressed. This meeting went smoothly, we didn't have to listen to a bunch of personal nonsense, and you all were most professional. I'm very, very pleased, and I haven't been in a long time because didn't enjoy coming to the meetings because of those attitudes, but I will make a point now to start coming, and I really want to thank you for doing a great job.
Thank you so much.
That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
You know who I wish was here to hear your comment, Bob, it's Colleen Almody, she would see, she'd probably come up and give you a hug right now.
Anytime she wants.
If she heard that, because she loves, she always wants people to come, yeah, you wouldn't want her to hug you right now. But when she's well, she would appreciate those comments as well, because she really tries to encourage people to come out, so, well, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other response for public comment tonight?
Thank you for coming.
Okay, with that, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please sign a saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great, and thank you so much.
Thank you.